Okay. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 9th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM or as close to it as possible, as soon as we can achieve a quorum. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Meetings are open to the public. We do invite the public to join us in participating council meetings. For those of you unable to attend, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is just shy of 10:15, and we're also just shy of a quorum. We only have eight members present at this time. But we do have a couple of special presentations and recognition schedules for today. I want to begin by recognizing Councilmember Tom Labange.
If I could, just a moment, please. Mr. President, members of council, councilmembers, would you come over and join me? But before I make my presentation, we have with us guests today day-by-day tours from the 12th Council District. If you could stand up and be recognized by the council, we welcome you. You're going to see the great City Hall. Got a beautiful smile right there. Thank you for coming, and I hope you enjoy your stay here. And I hope when you drove down, you had a nice drive, because we'll have a special presentation tomorrow morning. I'll be out at one of our local schools as we initiate a program to take the pledge, take the pledge to slow down. With me now is Councilmember Dennis Zine, who's here taking the pledge. It's all about traffic. It's all about school. It's all about children. And at this time, I'm going to call on first to speak before I present you with the commendation. John Higgins, who's going to give a little overview on this particular program that I think all council members and their staff will be certainly interested whether they're in San Pedro or Chatsworth or anywhere in the city.
John, thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning. On behalf of Autobytel, sponsor of the Take the Pledge to Slow Down campaign, I want to thank you for inviting us here today. We truly appreciate that Councilmember Labange and the entire L.A. City Council has recognized our efforts to promote safe neighborhood driving. Nationally, 30% of all fatal crashes are speed-related. In California, jumps to 35%. Regrettably, L.A. leads the state. The foundation of our Safe Driving Campaign is the pledge, a promise to take personal responsibility on the road, especially in neighborhood streets. Please let me read it to you. Absolutely. I hereby pledge to reconsider my driving habits, beginning this day, this hour, and to reevaluate my need to race from place to place. I pledge to observe the speed limit on each and every neighborhood street as if it were my own, as if the people I love most, my children, my spouse, my friends, lived there. I take this pledge because I know that by improving my driving habits, I am making an important contribution to the safety of my community and providing a positive example for other drivers. Thank you. The pledge is written by a grandmother from North Carolina named Sherri Williams. She recognized she just had to do this. When we at Autobytel heard about her efforts to stop neighborhood speeding, we decided to help Sherri, take the power of one woman and multiply to the power of millions. Our campaign is based on the idea that each and every one of us has the ability to make a difference, one street or one cul-de-sac at a time, just like Sherri did. We've come a long way in a very short period of time. Just yesterday, we joined forces with the Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and put the brakes on fatalities at a very well-attended Washington, D.C. Safe Driving Rally. Tomorrow, Councilmember Labange will host the West Coast launch of the Take the Pledge to Slow Down at a community safe driving rally at the Ivanhoe School in Silver Lake. I would encourage any interested parties to attend. This week, we also launched Take the Pledge on all the Autobytel car-buying websites. Now, tens of millions of Americans will have the opportunity to take the pledge online. By supporting the pledge, ladies and gentlemen, the council is not only helping to promote safe driving in neighborhood streets through L.A., but becoming the spark to do so through the rest of the country. I again like to thank Councilmember Labange and the entire City Council for supporting our mission to help more drivers make the right decision. L.A., as we know, is a patchwork of closely-knit neighborhoods. We're proud to work with the City Council to help make our neighborhoods and thus L.A. as a whole a better, safer place to live. Now, before I leave, I'm going to ask for a personal favor. I'm going to ask that when you have a few minutes out of your busy schedules, that you each take time to take the pledge by going online, log on to www.autobytel.com. Take a few minutes, send it out to at least five friends, ask them to do the same, or at the very least, reach your entire constituency. I'd like to thank you for taking the lead position in the country to help our drive make our neighborhoods safer. Together, we will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Also with John today is Melanie Weber. We thank you, but also Colleen Schwinn, who's here from the Los Feliz District. Colleen is going to speak, a mother who migrated back to America, originally from New York, came back from France, located herself in the Los Feliz community because of the friend school on Russell Avenue and said, "I want to live close to where my school is," but also took this up as a personal initiative because of her interest in traffic and traffic safety. Colleen, Carolene.
You know, when I first found out about this campaign, it really touched something in me because I realized that I can control only the way I drive. I can't control the way everybody else drives, but I can make a decision to drive the speed limit, and I can think of my kids every time I get in the car. You know, I was talking to Sherri Williams, the woman who founded this campaign, and I asked her why she started it, and she said she felt she had to, and she said to me, "It only takes an instant, and then that person is gone forever." And I thought, "My God, how can you live with that responsibility, with that?" I couldn't. So I really, I took this pledge, and I said, "You know, I can do this. I can make this difference," and I thought, "I want to spread this so that other people make this decision, because it'll make all of us safer, and it'll make all of our children safer." That's all.
Also with this morning is Captain Gardner from the Transit Division, LAPD, a former motor transit, not just transit, but also traffic captain. He knows about traffic safety. Captain Gardner, say a few words about the importance of this.
No, I was never a motor cop. Thank you very much. I see this as a program that the Los Angeles Police Department could definitely embrace. It's important to us that drivers drive defensively, and undisciplined drivers are almost the rule rather than the exception. You know, we see it day in and day out, and I'm a former captain in charge of South Traffic Division, and so this is something to me that's very important, and something that fits in with our community-based philosophy, and something I think we can get into every neighborhood to get them involved in something like this that is going to promote awareness of slowing down, taking time, because you'll never get there if you do speed. So thank you very much, Mr. President and Council.
Thank you, Captain. And finally, we have our very own retired motor officer. You know, there are three things we could do about traffic. We could enforce it, we could engineer it, we could educate it. This is a great education program, and taking the pledge, and I'll put that egg underneath our accelerator to slow down and look out, and I love what Carolene said about controlling our destiny. But now, I welcome the great councilman from the 3rd District who served this city so well as a Los Angeles police officer, who rode a motorcycle and never fell off, and also worked Raider Games. Please join us, Councilmember Dennis Zine.
I never fell off that motorcycle. I'm trying to get Eric Garcetti to ride a motorcycle and Nick Pacheco to ride a motorcycle. But they always talk about the carrot and the stick. Yesterday, Councilmember Miss Sikowski was out in the Valley with Chief Bergman and some of the Valley folks. So if you take the pledge, you can probably avoid the newest technology that the Los Angeles Police Department has, laser radar. Laser radar for speed enforcement, and we want to educate people. This is a wonderful program. We try education. When education doesn't work, then it goes to enforcement, and as we know, the cost of speeding tickets go higher and higher and higher. And as I understand, there are 80 brand-new laser guns that are used by officers to catch speeders throughout the city of Los Angeles. It's a very accurate device. So while this is a very positive program, the viewers should heed the warning to take the pledge to slow down. We've got enough road rage and other problems on the streets of Los Angeles and congestion, but when you slow down, you can avoid that speeding ticket, you can avoid that collision, because we know that the tragedies can be avoided, and this is another positive measure that we can avoid that. But again, we got the carrot and the stick, and Councilmember Miss Sikowski knows, 80 new laser radar guns are going to be out there deployed within the LAPD to catch those of the travelers in the city of Los Angeles that don't want to heed the warning, don't want to take the pledge. So take the pledge, put that decal in your car, and avoid the citation and the consequences that you'll receive, and drive safely throughout our beautiful city of Los Angeles. Now, the man who knew William Mulholland and the water rights for Los Angeles, Tom Labange.
And now, very quickly, on behalf of all the council, we salute Autobytel for their initiative, and Ms. Williams, and that's a wonderful story, that one person from North Carolina, and Stacy Marble, I want to order up a certificate for Ms. Williams of North Carolina, who had this idea that says, "Take the pledge to slow down. Let's all do it." Let's salute Autobytel for their leadership as a corporation, and all of us today for this day to take the pledge to slow down, and traffic safety is the way to go.
Mr. Labange, before you leave, I do have Mr. Reyes, who wishes to add a few words, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Council Chair. Tom, I want to thank you, congratulate you, and all the volunteers for this pledge. You know, as people drive through, they're in a rush. As they get closer downtown, they tend to get faster because they need to get to work, or when they want to leave, they want to get out of there quick to get home across the city. But along the way, we have several grammar schools, several high schools. So on major boulevards, like on Sixth Street, Wilshire, Third Street, especially with Union Crossing, I've had many, many children struck and hit by cars, many fatalities. It got to the point where one of the victims, the family members in the community, put up their own board sign on the corner and said, "Slow down, please," and it gave the name of the young girl that was killed. So it's very serious what you're promoting. It's very important. I happen to live in the bottom of a hill. They're rushing to get to Marvin Way and Pasadena, and I literally hear the cars bottoming out as they're speeding down these really narrow streets as they move from Mount Washington to Highland Park. So even when I'm sweeping my own streets, I have to basically turn around and tell people to slow down before they strike me or my son, when we're sweeping our front yards. So it's a very serious thing, and I just want to thank you for your good work, and we need to keep educating the community how important it is to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I took the pledge. And I really do want to congratulate you. This is an excellent idea. Leave it to a woman to come up with a great idea for taking personal responsibility for slowing down and preventing tragic accidents in and around our community. I just had a tragic accident in San Pedro not too long ago, where a 12-year-old boy was killed by someone who was speeding, and of course, you know, the family of Tony will be changed forever, not to mention all of San Pedro. So, you know, I think the greatest complaints I get as a councilwoman are from my neighborhoods who want to somehow reduce speeding, and they want stop signs, and they want crosswalks, and they want speed humps. So it is a constant problem that I'm hearing from my constituents, and what a great idea to just have individuals take this pledge for themselves, to decide to rethink their speed and slowing down. It's a great idea. I'm proud to have it. I will put the sticker proudly on my car. I hope there's advertising of this. I would love to see billboards saying, "Take the pledge." I would like to see license plate holders that say, "I've taken the pledge." I think this is something that can really spread all over the country. And Councilmember Labange, I'm glad you've taken the pledge, because now I'll agree to get back in your car and drive with you.
Thank you very much, members of council. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Let's all take the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bonjour. Good morning. Buenos dias. Three languages of North America, though I'm sure there are others, but the three primary languages of North America. Today, it gives me great joy, colleagues, to be able to recognize and counsel the NAFTA Trade in Goods Committee. This is the first time that the NAFTA Trade in Goods Committee has met outside of the three national capitals of the states that make up the NAFTA agreement. And members of this committee that are here today in Los Angeles, and I hope that you will join me in welcoming them, include the United States Departments of Commerce, State, and Treasury, as well as the Office of the United States Trade Representative and their respective Canadian and Mexican counterparts. The purpose of this committee here in Los Angeles during this meeting is to negotiate the removal of the final trade barriers among the three nations and resolve any outstanding issues among the partners, and we certainly wish all the parties, American, Canadian, and Mexican, all good luck and Godspeed. Among the Los Angeles sponsors of this event here are the City of Los Angeles, the Consulate General of Canada, Consulate General of Mexico, headed by Ambassador Martellara, whom I know Yesterday, Councilmember Miss Sikowski was out in the valley with Chief Bergman and some of the valley folks. So, if you take the pledge, you can probably avoid the newest technology that the Los Angeles Police Department has, laser radar. Laser radar for speed enforcement. And we want to educate people. This is a wonderful program. We try education. When education doesn't work, then it goes to enforcement. And as we know, the cost of speeding tickets go higher and higher and higher. And as I understand, there are 80 brand-new laser guns that are used by officers to catch speeders throughout the city of Los Angeles. It's a very accurate device. So, while this is a very positive program, the viewers should heed the warning to take the pledge to slow down. We've got enough road rage and other problems on the streets of Los Angeles and congestion, but when you slow down, you can avoid that speeding ticket, you can avoid that collision because we know that the tragedies can be avoided and this is another positive measure that we can avoid that. But again, we got the carrot and the stick and Councilman Miss Sikowski knows, 80 new laser radar guns are going to be out there deployed within the LAPD to catch those of the travelers in the city of Los Angeles that don't want to heed the warning, don't want to take the pledge. So, take the pledge, put that decal in your car and avoid the citation and the consequences that you'll receive and drive safely throughout our beautiful city of Los Angeles. Now, the man who knew William Mulholland and the water rights for Los Angeles, Tom Labange.
Thank you, Dennis. And now, very quickly, on behalf of all the council, we salute Autobytel for their initiative and Ms. Williams. And that's a wonderful story, that one person from North Carolina and Stacy Marble, I want to order up a certificate for Ms. Williams of North Carolina, who had this idea that says, "Take the pledge to slow down. Let's all do it." Let's salute Autobytel for their leadership as a corporation and all of us today for this day to take the pledge to slow down and traffic safety is the way to go.
Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange, before you leave, I do have Mr. Reyes who wishes to add a few words, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Council Chair. Tom, I want to thank you, congratulate you and all the volunteers for this pledge. You know, as people drive through, they're in a rush. As they get to closer downtown, they tend to get faster because they need to get to work or when they want to leave, they want to get out of there quick to get home across the city. But along the way, we have several grammar schools, several high schools. So, on major boulevards like on 6th Street, Wilshire, 3rd Street, especially with Union Crossing, I've had many, many children struck and hit by cars, many fatalities. It got to the point where one of the victims, the family members in the community, put up their own board sign on the corner and said, "Slow down, please." And it gave the name of the young girl that was killed. So, it's very serious what you're promoting. It's very important. I happen to live in the bottom of a hill, the rush to get to Marvin Way and Pasadena, and I literally hear the cars bottoming out as they're speeding down these really narrow streets as they move from Mount Washington to Highland Park. So, even when I'm sweeping my own streets, I have to basically turn around and tell people to slow down before they strike me or my son when we're sweeping our front yards. So, it's a very serious thing and I just want to thank you for your good work and we need to keep educating the community how important it is to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I took the pledge. And I really do want to congratulate you. This is an excellent idea. Leave it to a woman to come up with a great idea for taking personal responsibility for slowing down and preventing tragic accidents in and around our community. I just had a tragic accident in San Pedro not too long ago where a 12-year-old boy was killed by someone who was speeding. And of course, you know, the family of Tony will be changed forever, not to mention all of San Pedro. So, you know, I think the greatest complaints I get in, as a councilwoman, are from my neighborhoods who want to somehow reduce speeding and they want stop signs and they want crosswalks and they want speed humps. So, it is a constant problem that I'm hearing from my constituents and what a great idea to just have individuals take this pledge for themselves to decide to rethink their speed and slowing down. It's a great idea. I'm proud to have it. I will, I will put the sticker proudly on my car. I hope there's advertising of this. I would love to see billboards saying, "Take the pledge." I would like to see license plate holders that say, "I've taken the pledge." I think this is something that can really spread all over the country. And Councilman Labange, I'm glad you've taken the pledge because now I'll agree to get back in your car and drive with you.
Thank you very much, Members of Council. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Let's all take the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti for our next presentation.
Bonjour. Good morning. Buenos dias. Three languages of North America, though I'm sure there are others, but the three primary languages of North America. Today, it gives me great joy, colleagues, to be able to recognize and counsel the NAFTA Trade in Goods Committee. This is the first time that the NAFTA Trade in Goods Committee has met outside of the three national capitals of the states that make up the NAFTA agreement. And members of this committee that are here today in Los Angeles, and I hope that you will join me in welcoming them, include the United States Departments of Commerce, State and Treasury, as well as the Office of the United States Trade Representative and their respective Canadian and Mexican counterparts. The purpose of this committee here in Los Angeles during this meeting is to negotiate the removal of the final trade barriers among the three nations and resolve any outstanding issues among the partners. And we certainly wish all the parties, American, Canadian and Mexican, all good luck and God's speed. Among the Los Angeles sponsors of this event here are the City of Los Angeles, the Consulate General of Canada, Consulate General of Mexico headed by Ambassador Martellara, whom I know all of you know, the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce and the Trade Commission of Mexico, Banco Mex. The United States Mexico Chamber of Commerce, California Pacific Chapter is the organizer of the event in coordination with the Office of the United States Trade Representatives and obviously the United States is the host nation. The importance of making sure that as we are more and more integrated in North America, that that is done in a way that is fair for all nations and fair for all citizens is critical. And I think as we look at greater integration, not just in North America, but throughout the Americas, the example that all of you set will be very important in setting the tone. And I'm sure we have lessons learned from early implementations of this integration, but I remember when Council President Padilla and myself and the mayor were down in Mexico, what it was like to be able to talk with a Mexican company, La Gigante, about a supermarket in Echo Park that they're interested in buying. And making sure that that flow is equal and making sure that that flow is bidirectional between two countries, tri-directional between all three of our countries and that our environmental protections, our worker protections, all of these things that all three nations stand for also get included in that mix is also of critical importance. So, we, we wish you good luck with it. I want to call forward Ambassador Martellara to say a few words and Carlos Valderrama as well, and I will present some certificates right after that. Ambassador.
Muchisimas gracias, Consejo. Muy buenas dias, Señor Presidente Alex Padilla, señores miembros del Consejo. Como siempre, es para el Consulado General de México un gusto el poder estar con ustedes y además acompañar esta magnífica delegación que el día de hoy está para sesionar por primera ocasión fuera de su sede. Les damos la bienvenida y formulamos votos porque tengan éxito en sus negociaciones. Muchísimas gracias, muy buenos días.
Gracias, Carlos Valderrama.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you very much for having us today. Members of council, thank you very much for hearing what this, this group is going to do in the next two, three days. And again, to the Canadian, Mexican and the U.S. delegation, welcome to Los Angeles on behalf of the U.S. Mexico Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carlos, and thank you for your leadership as well. I think this city and this council has certainly shown its leadership also. Want to give special thanks and praise to the mayor's office, Luiso Clemente, as well for the establishment of a trade office here, an international trade office in the city of Los Angeles. Coincidentally, today, we're also introducing a motion to establish an Office of Immigrant and Language Services here in the city of Los Angeles, where we probably have the greatest immigrant populations. Though we are known as the second-largest Mexican city in the world, we're also one of the largest Canadian cities in the world, too. So, we are very pleased to be able to, to make that commitment here locally to international trade, communication, commerce and friendship. So, with that in mind, I'd like to present, on behalf of the mayor and myself, the United States NAFTA Trade in Goods Committee in recognition of your participation in trade negotiations in the city of Los Angeles, which have been of great benefit to the economic growth of our city. First, the United States Committee, if I can.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And representative from Canada for the Canada NAFTA Trade in Goods Committee.
Thank you very much. Delighted to be here.
And por supuesto, the Mexico NAFTA Trade in Goods Committee as well. Felicitaciones. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Congratulations to the recipients. Chair recognizes for our final presentation, Councilmember Weiss.
Colleagues, good morning. Like you all to know that this week is Mental Illness Awareness Week across the country and it's an opportunity for mental illness and mental health professionals to share their knowledge with people in office and people in the community, just to let people know a little bit more about the prevalence of the problems of mental illness and some of the things that people are doing at cutting-edge institutions to help address them. I'm very proud to say that as a, the council member who represents UCLA and as an alum of UCLA, as many of you are, that one of the leaders in the nation in the study of mental illness and mood disorders is the UCLA Mood Disorders Research Program and I'm here with the director of that program, Dr. Lori Alshuler. I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Alshuler and tell you a little bit about the program at UCLA. It, it's an extraordinary program and you know, what's interesting is Dr. Alshuler and her cohorts have taken, have taken the UCLA program from, was it one office essentially at the VA several years ago to now you're in the halls of the UCLA Medical School with up to 30 people on your staff. It's just an extraordinary effort that they make there and, and it's very important. It's been estimated that there are as many as 18 million Americans as adults who suffer from mood and depressive orders at any one time. That's approximately 10% of our country. And so, it's very important that we recognize the efforts of those professionals who are seeking to find new, creative and innovative ways to, to not only address and treat the disorders, but just to get awareness out there that these are medical conditions, that they are significant conditions and that treatment is available. And so, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the efforts of Dr. Lori Alshuler and the staff of the Mood Disorders Program at the greatest school in Los Angeles, UCLA, just to see if anyone's paying attention. And, and encourage you to keep doing what you're doing because you're making the world a better place. So, congratulations to you and we'd love to hear from you, doctor.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilwoman Jack Weiss and the entire city council for this honor and recognition. I'd also like to thank my research staff who spends their workdays working very hard to try to better understand the causes of and treatment for major mental illnesses such as depression and bipolar disorder. As Councilwoman Weiss said, 18 million Americans suffer from depression or bipolar illness and unfortunately, due to the continuing stigma associated with having these disorders, many people don't seek treatment. Also, many people aren't aware that the cluster of symptoms they have are actually a treatable medical condition. So, we're hoping during Mental Illness Awareness Week to further de-stigmatize mental illness, to let people better understand that depression and bipolar disorder, just like hypertension and diabetes, are major medical problems that require medication treatment. And we've recently actually wanted to provide more of a resource at UCLA to the community. We've had our phone number changed to 794-MOOD, M-O-O-D, which we hope will be easy to remember, 794-6663. So, we're hoping if anybody has a family member, loved one or friend that they know that has a mood disorder, that they will view UCLA as a community resource. So, thank you again very much for this recognition.
Congratulations.
Before she goes, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I just wanted to rise and thank my colleague, Jack Weiss, and UCLA for their great work. As a UCLA alumni, I need to stand and thank you for this great work you're doing. These kinds of disorders, these kinds of issues impact communities throughout the region and I'm just glad that UCLA has taken the lead on making sure that we understand it. You know, as our cities get more crowded, our sense of relief, our need for nourishment, our need for ways to letting out our pressures increases with time as we get more dense. So, understanding not only the physical elements, but also the actual buildup, chemical makeup of our systems is important in order to deal with these kinds of pressures. It manifests itself in many different ways and sometimes many of it is violence. So, thank you for being there and hopefully find ways to make our city calmer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to add as well as the other Bruin on the city council. Ed tries to say he's the only Bruin, but thank you for your leadership. As, as Ed and Jack have stated, this is such of critical importance and appreciate the dedication that you all have and look forward in the future working with you. So, thank you for being here today. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We have some other other Bruins as well and, and it's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Madam Clerk, during the presentations, we have achieved a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Brinson Galenter, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Miss Sikowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Willie Thomas, Weiss, Sign Padilla, 14 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Pacheco moves. Ms. Hahn seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number four, request pursuit to building and safety, continue, to continue that matter to October 22nd.
Members' request to continue item number four by the department without objection. So ordered.
Items number five and seven, building and safety has advised those matters may be received and filed inasmuch as the assessment has been paid.
Members' recommendation to receive and file item number five and item number seven.
Also request.
Seeing no objection.
Also, a request on item number six, to continue that matter to October 29th.
Members' request to continue item number six. Seeing no objection. Item six is continued.
Item number 10, a request to continue that applicant consents to continue, to continuance to October 30th.
Members' request to continue item number 10, also without objection.
Item number 11, applicant consents to continuous to October, excuse me, November 20th.
Item number 11, request to continue to November 20th, without objection.
And also, item number 12, applicant consents to continuance to November 13th.
Item number 12, request to continue, also without objection.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one through three are street or alley vacations and if there are no protests, council should instruct the city engineer to proceed with the vacations.
I do have one card, actually, no, that's a different item. I don't have any cards on items one through three, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Madam Clerk, do we need a vote?
Yes, Mr. President.
To instruct the department? Then unless there's someone wishing to call item one, two or three special, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
Next items, eight and nine are building and safety confirmations of assessments and a motion is required on those. Those are also public hearing items.
Okay. Do you have a card on item number nine? Let's call that special. On item number eight, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to call item eight special or is there a motion from the floor on item number eight? Members? We need a motion from the floor on item number eight. Otherwise, we'll call it special. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items which public hearings have been held, items 13 through 38.
Items 13 through 38, public hearings have been held in committee. Members wishing to call any specials?
Item 18.
Item 18 called special by Ms. Gruel. Mr. Labange?
Item 20, please.
Item 20 called special by Mr. Labange. Any other specials? Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, item 21, 27, 28 and 37.
21, 27, 28.
And 15, please.
Mr. Holden, which other one? 21, 27, 28.
And 37.
And 37. Called special by Mr. Holden.
Which is it? 15?
Any other specials?
Mr. President, I believe item number 15 was called special by Mr. Labange.
Is it item 15 or item number 50, Mr. Labange?
Yeah. One 15.
Mr. Labange.
No, it's not. I think it's 50, but let me check this.
5-0.
Hold on just a second. I'll, I'll get back to you.
Any other specials in the meantime?
That's all right. That's okay.
I believe it's item number 50, Mr. Labange, item 5-0.
I'm okay. I'm okay, Mr. President.
Is it a repeat item?
I'm okay.
You're okay. Okay. So, he withdraws his request to call item 50 special. Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items which public hearings have not been held, items 39 through 68.
Items 39 through 68 now before us without objection. We shall consider these matters today. I do have a card on item 64. We'll call that special. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I'd like to have items 40 and 49 continued, please.
40 and 49, request to continue for how long?
One week.
For one week. New hearing date would be October 16th. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none. Items 40 and 49 are continued. Any other specials? 66 called special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Items 53 and 54 forthwith, please. Is that the end of the regular meeting agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Let us then without objection temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda.
Mr. President, the regular, the special meeting is noticed for 12:00 PM.
Oh, for 12:00 PM. Okay, then let's keep on the regular meeting agenda and go back to items called special.
First item called special, item number eight, that was a public hearing item. It's a building and safety confirmation of assessment and that's in council district
Is there a motion from the floor on item number eight? Mr. Pacheco?
I would move the hearing closed and move approval of the assessment.
Okay. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number nine was called special inasmuch as there is card from the public.
Council calls forward Jesus Aguayo at this time. Please come forward on item number nine.
My name is Jesus Aguayo and I'm here only to protest the proposed abatement on my property on 210 West 43rd Street. And basically, the basis for objecting to the proposal is we basically were not properly notified until after the abatement was completed. It was, we basically were notified on August the 9th of 2001 and the abatement and the fencing of the property was completed sometime after March of 2001, which was about five months after the building and safety fenced place, we were notified. And I have the certified copy from the Department Building and Safety, they, they send us dated on 8/9/2001. And that's all for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. This concludes public comment on this item. Chair recognizes Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to ask representative from building and safety who's worked on this case, please come forward to the table and identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. I'm Andy Harris.
Building and safety.
From building and safety, senior inspector.
Thank you. Is this property vacant?
Yes. It wasn't. It's not now it was.
Okay. And, and in the recent past, has it been subject to complaints regarding vandalism, graffiti and other illegal activity?
Yes, it has.
Can you tell me what sort of illegal activity?
I believe gang members and homeless people were going into the property on a regular basis. We were receiving complaints from Councilmember Walters' office and the police department.
So, then this case goes back as far as when the previous council member was in office?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, now, has the property been subject to a lien because of those problems and the lack of response from the property owner?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, how have you tried to contact the property owner over the past few years?
By orders, by looking up the phone numbers, by trying to get in touch with them in some form or fashion.
Okay. I, I would just ask my colleagues, note that this case has been pending since the previous council member was in office and the building and safety department has made what appears to be very diligent efforts to get in touch with the property owner through all manner of communication and I would ask you to support the city in its efforts to place a lien on this property to compel the property owner to make sure that this property is not only brought into compliance, but kept in compliance because it has been a long-term nuisance to the community of the 9th Council District.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, is that a motion for approval?
Yes, thank you.
Members, we have a motion before us. Other members wishing to be heard?
I second that emotion.
Seeing no other members wishing to be heard on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 18 called special by Councilmember Gruel, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Ms. Gruel, item number 18.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. The item before you, and if I could also call Captain Pritchard from LAPD up here as well. As many of you know, illegal street racing has been a unique and longstanding problem in the San Fernando Valley. It not only endangers our children, and, you know, ultimately deaths and serious injuries, but also the quality of life of those neighborhoods and those bystanders. And it doesn't have a quick and easy solution, but I have to tell you, with individuals sitting here and the Department of Transportation, we have made major strides in just a short period of time based on their activities. What we're trying to do is look at physical deterrence, increased penalties, and also constructive legal alternatives. Since August, since we introduced that first motion, and I spent the night out on Glen Oaks Boulevard, we have had, not street walking, Mr. Burnson said, no, it was not that, creating towaway zones, which we now have put on Peoria. Also, we have been working with the Department of Transportation on the speed humps and identified that it is possible to put them there, and also working with the Governor's Office, which all of you helped approve, to add street racing new legislation. And on Saturday, all of us in the last few days have met with the chief, proposed Chief of Police, I took Chief Bratton out to Sunland, Tahanga, and to Glen Oaks and Peoria, and showed him where we had a big problem, to get his assistance as we move forward. So today, the ordinance before you will allow prosecutors to charge spectators at illegal speed contests with a misdemeanor crime. And this is really an important thing, and then this sends a clear message to our neighborhoods that our streets will not be used as drag strips, and that those that are terrorizing our neighborhoods in the San Fernando Valley, and I know in Burnson's district and Dennis Zine that this is a problem, we are going to say that if you're a spectator as well, you are part of the problem, because that's why people race, so that people can watch them. So today, we have that in front of us, and I know and ask our city attorney and also Captain Pritchard to talk a little bit about what we're, is before us today and items that will be coming forward, but I know that on the issue of the forfeiture of the vehicle, that we're going to be looking at that in current case law, on not only street racing, but also with Councilmember Tom Labange's proposal, which is on the prostitution and drugs, and so that we can do this in concert with that. So if I can to, I have a minor amendment that has been put forward, item 18A in front of you as well, to be considered today.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
And my timer wasn't on, so you let me speak much longer than usually.
Are you gonna push your button?
Maybe the system's not working.
No, it is, I have Mr. Burnson, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Labange, but we'll hear from the staff first.
Good morning, my name is Sue Franz, I'm the Assistant City Attorney, and I drafted the amendments to ordinance on spectators at street racing, 47.15. We had an opportunity, once we were going to increase the penalties, that we thought that we could enhance the ordinance in and of itself, and I want to appreciate working with Councilmember Gruel's staff, as well as the Neighborhood Prosecutors Program, who really brought it to our attention in terms of working on the problem and trying to formulate a resolution on this. I think it's sort of a holistic approach in terms of what we're doing, not only looking at the nature of the neighborhood, whether or not it can be restructured in terms of barriers, whether or not increased enforcement, and having the appropriate prosecutorial tools. I also think it makes sense, since the Neighborhood Prosecutors Program is also looking at other vehicle forfeitures in other areas that affect the quality of life within the City of Los Angeles, that it does make sense to combine it, not only as to the legal issues, but how to approach it in a coordinated and consistent manner. So I would be glad to respond to any of the questions that any of our council members have.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I want to thank the City Attorney's Office and DOT, and Wendy also. And this is a very difficult issue for many of us that have had long histories of drag racing in our streets that are extremely dangerous. Does this, in this, what we are acting on today, does that, is that an ordinance that elevates being a spectator to a misdemeanor?
Yes, that is correct, specifically, it does.
And that's long past due, and I think that is one way to discourage drag racing, because many of the spectators are involved as far as the gambling aspect of it. A lot of people don't realize this is a major gambling event. Unfortunately, we're prohibited by the state vehicle code from actually confiscating the vehicles, in fact, I think all we can hold them for is 30 days. But we are seeking, my understanding is under this, what the actions of the Transportation Committee, we're seeking legislation that would give us added authority to either confiscate or impound for longer periods of time, as well as increase the fines that are available for this activity, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, well, this is long past due, and Wendy, you've been a champion, not a speedwalker, but a champion. And I want to commend you for it, and I want to thank the staff who've done a good job, as well as LAPD, who have worked with us through the years on this problem. The only problem is that the leading opponent of drag racing on the Police Department, unfortunately, is now, well fortunately, is now sitting with us here, but he's lending his expertise and his, shall we say, exuberance for dealing with drag racing to where we can really do some damage. So thank you all very much, and I think we need to move forward with this.
Thank you, and Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, and for those compliments, Mr. Burnson, when I was with the LAPD and working at Valley Traffic Division, Councilman Burnson was very aggressive in trying to eradicate the problem in the 12th District, and it flew over to the 7th District and the 2nd District, and it's like this butterfly that flies from one district to the other. The West Valley has had it, Wendy is not only the pothole queen, but now the street racing queen, and obviously, she's doing a great job bringing this to the forefront. I've left that arena of my life into the legislative arena, where I know for many, many years, we've attempted to bring to the table some very serious sanctions. I know there have been sweeps where we block off the area, bring in an army of officers, cite people, impound cars, which is an incredible drain of personnel from the LAPD and the Department of Transportation. The concern is that the sanctions be so severe that send that strong deterrent. Clearly, Foothill Division, the LAP doesn't have the resources to go out every week and barricade, as we used to do on Van Nuys Boulevard, to break the backs of the street cruising on Van Nuys Boulevard, and then Brand Boulevard, and the tragedies that have occurred with just the cruising in addition to the street racing. So whatever sanctions we can put into place, it's going to preserve life, it's going to bring tranquility to the community, and I know that the Foothill Division now has that main problem, but that problem used to be over in Devonshire, it used to be in West Valley, it used to be in Van Nuys, and I remember when people would be arrested, they'd get their cars out, they'd be back the next week doing it. So clearly, the sanctions have to be enhanced, and going after the spectators, as Wendy said, you're not going to have the street races without the spectators, because it's a thrill for them. And we attempted with Assemblyman Katz, when he was in the State Assembly, with Quimby Funds, to establish a drag strip in the San Fernando Valley, and we did everything with Councilman Burnson's office to try and do that, and it's really not going to happen. It's not feasible, there's no place to put it. So what you've brought forward has been in the hopper for a long time, basically festering, and I know that the department, the Police Department, wants to do what they can to preserve the quality of life in the communities, along with the Neighborhood Prosecutors, so I feel very happy to support all of this legislation, and hopefully, the state will then follow through with what we need from the state legislators, to bring this to the closure, where the sanctions will be so severe, people will say, it's not worth street racing. They can go to Irwindale, where they have a drag strip at Irwindale, and do the racing out there. And Big Willie, who was an advocate of legal racing, not on the streets, but down in San Pedro, and I don't know if that's still in operation or not, but Big Willie has been at the forefront of trying to get people off the street, and they want to come to racing, and some of you may have met Big Willie over the years, but he's been a strong advocate of bringing this into some kind of control. So my compliments to Wendy, and to the City Attorney's Office, to the LAPD, but this mission has been in place for a long, long time, and hopefully, this will be the conclusion to send that strong deterrent, that it's not going to be tolerated, and the sanctions will be severe enough, they won't want to do it anymore. Congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council, so many good things you've said about our City Attorney's Office and their work, and our Police Department, and also Councilmember Gruel for bringing this forward. And Councilmember Zine, you mentioned Big Willie, and I was just talking to Nate about Big Willie, and, because we haven't seen Big Willie lately, and I'm not sure where he and Tomico is now, but they've been great advocates for safety. And I just wanted to ask the Police Department, because I think at Irwindale and at Pomona, they have alternatives for young people who want to drive off-street fast, correct?
They do.
Good, so we're going to encourage young people to go to Irwindale, or to Pomona, or any other place where there's legal, safe, administered, street racing, off-street.
In fact, let me add something there, what we do is when we do our—
You can talk to the mic and talk to the chair.
Our street racing enforcement, what we do is pass out flyers to Irwindale to give them an opportunity to take advantage of this legal street racing, to move it off of the streets and onto a location that's very viable for that. So yes, we are using that as we speak.
Because I think what we had earlier about take the pledge and slow it down for traffic, I think there's probably nothing worse, there's many things, but nothing could be as worse as when you get a call at 2:30 in the morning, say, five kids from some valley high school were tragically injured or killed in a street racing incident. I know that happened recently on the freeway. So I think this is extremely important, and very good, Wendy, because this is following through on the need to make a difference in the lives of people, and I want to thank you for it, and I stand tall to support it, and thank the City Attorney and the LAPD.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel.
Well, just thank you, all my colleagues, and again, want to thank City Attorney, LAPD, AP also from the Neighborhood Prosecutor Program, who was out with us till 2:00, 3:00 in the morning that night, and also Department of Transportation, because they have been on Friday and Saturday nights, closing the street off as a temporary measure, and I think that that has been an important part of us getting our act together. As you mentioned, Sue, this is a holistic approach, we are looking at every single level, it is speed humps, it is towaway zones, it is spectators, it is those individuals who are actually street racing, and also, as Mr. Labange mentioned, excellent opportunities and options for kids to go where they can legally race and safely race in other places, and continuing to work with the City Attorney's Office to do that. So I just, this has been an excellent experience, and one in which every department has worked together, and the community particularly, because they have been traumatized by this activity every Friday and Saturday night, and so we want to protect those spectators as well, because when we drove out that night, going down Peoria, there were hundreds of kids running in front of our cars, the police cars, and so the potential is really quite amazing. So I just want to thank everyone for their help and participation, and urgent eye vote today.
Ms. Zine for a second time.
I just have one more, Mr. President, colleagues, for our viewers, that the ordinance that we have for the barricade is not only for the specific streets, but if they then flow to another area, that jurisdiction by the department to barricade those streets. And for the viewers to know, when they congregate, when they see these cars start to converge in their neighborhood, to call the LAPD, because you don't have officers out there on every street knowing where they're going to be, so as they see them congregate, call the department, you can then send department personnel out, resources, to address them, because oftentimes, you'll see a whole onslaught of cars converge on an area, they'll have the street race, and by the time they call the police, the races are taking place, and the tragedies may occur, but as they congregate, to call the LAPD, the Foothill Division in particular, it's not necessarily a 9/11 call when they're starting to congregate, but the fact is, give them the heads up, and then go out there and snip it in the bud. Thank you.
And when you call the LAPD, you can request Reserve Officer Dennis P. Zine.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you. I'll be on the beat.
Seeing no other members wishing to be heard at this time, we do have an amending motion that has been circulated, I believe we can accept that as a friendly amendment. So let's open the roll on the matter as amended. Oh, now I see Mr. Holden on the cue.
I was going to ask what's amended motion, I didn't hear her speak to the amendment.
Ms. Gruel.
The amending motion that we put in relative to the forfeiture, and if you have that in front of you.
That's a legitimate question, Mr. President.
Yes, there is an ordinance that we've been looking at through the Oakland, the City of Oakland, and I think it has some measure of applicability in terms of vehicle forfeiture, and we're trying to ensure that we've got the legality and the basis to do it, since it's going to be on a little bit of a different legal theory, and see the applicability of it, but as long as we were looking at it as to drugs and prostitution, it also makes sense to join it in looking at vehicle forfeiture as it applies to street racing, and therefore, we're going to combine it together. And then, my understanding is, since it was originally in Rules, Election, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, that it would just follow and track prostitution and drug forfeiture motion.
So, Madam City Attorney, it's a question in your mind, is whether or not the City of Los Angeles have the authority at this time to issue an ordinance whereby we could impound these vehicles if they're involved in street racing, because you have the City Attorney look into it, so.
It's more than just impounding, it's the actual forfeiture of the vehicle, and the motion would also direct us, as long as it is legal, that we intend to draft it.
It is legal, you said.
Well, we're going to totally explore it, because you're talking about a nuisance abatement theory, which is a little bit different than what you're talking about exhibition of speed or street racing. So we're going to combine it all in one, and if it is feasible, we're certainly going to draft that ordinance.
I thought you were going to report to the committee as to whether or not you can have legislation drafted to give you the authority to do this.
I think the idea—
That's why the original motion, I think, was—
The idea was, instead of finding out if it's legal, then having to come back to us to ask them to write the ordinance, it's a combination thereof, so if it is determined that it is legal, the City Attorney can proceed and draft the ordinance, the ordinance then comes back to Rules and Elections.
Correct, and if we need to seek state legislation, then we're starting our two-year legislative cycle in January, and we'll certainly pursue it there.
This is an item where a report was required, and it would seem to me that the City Attorney would be prepared at this time to say whether or not such ordinance would be legal, rather than have to review it to make that determination, number one. And number two, if that not being the case, then the Rules, Election, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee could take immediate action to ask that legislation be drafted this time, whether it's a pre-print bill, or whichever the case may be, that we look into it for the possibility and enact it into law. I still think you'll have trouble with the bystanders, if the guy's blind, or I can't see, you're going to have a problem getting that through, you're going to have a lot of arguments against it, but the other matters, Mr. President, and members, that you might be successful with, given it's been a nuisance, and clearly establish the facts and evidence that it has been a nuisance.
Okay, we feel comfortable moving forward here. We still have the item as amended before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
It's a unanimous vote, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 20, called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, members. The working in audits and government efficiency, we found that it's very important that departments respond on a timely fashion, and this also wasn't the case as often as we would like. So this directs the General Manager to make sure within 30 working days, they respond to the Controller's request, and the Controller supports this, so we get efficient and proper audits, so we make sure we use the best efficiency for all the money that people are paying for the services. So I just ask for your support on this, to get rapid response and attention from audits by our city departments, as are requested by the Controller. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, other members?
That's it.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 21, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item 21.
Yes. Mr. President, members, I'm going to need a report on this, CEO, CLA if necessary. This request for the Fair Labor Standard Act's recommendation for implementing was introduced by, I think, Mr. Weiss? And I'm just wondering whether or not, I mean, if this were not done, these changes, recommended changes would not even be under consideration at this time, which means that the city would have been in violation in some sort. the city would have been in violation in some sort of the act. And so I would just like to have you say what those recommended changes are and why they come to us at this time, and why not they have not been implemented before.
First, they have, we have implemented a number of the actions identified in this memo, specifically the training program. We've completed the training program or training our departmental personnel staff, our assistant general managers, and a significant number of the general managers on FLSA issues. We, on a monthly basis, we're also monitoring compliance, the city's compliance of the Fair Labor Standard Act. We have, the mayor's office has disseminated a very strong directive, asking each department to ensure compliance within his or her department on FLSA rules and regulations. What we're asking today is that you approve the, all the elements of a FLSA oversight process. We have worked with the city attorney, very closely with the city attorney. We've also worked with an outside law office, Libberton Cassidy, who's been basically our partner on FLSA issues and compliance issues for the past about five years. So it's not as if we've ignored this issue. This issue, since we've dealt with a very, very serious lawsuit in the police department, has been a priority for not only our office, but also the city attorney's office. So we have, we have, there is an ongoing effort.
That was my, need for my question. We've been sued-
Yes.
-for not being in compliance with the first-
Yes.
-Labor Standard Act. And is that the only lawsuit that we've received, the one from the police department?
There's another action currently pending.
Okay, Mr. President and members, I call this especially because of the seriousness of it. I mean, Fair Labor Standards Act, that's very critical to each and every one of us, that we treat the employees fairly. And when they have to go to court to require that some change be made or that fairness be given them, then that means that we did something wrong possibly or made it necessary to be litigated. And so I just thought that it was good to make this, to make a note of it, and it would not have happened had the motion been introduced in 2001 by Weiss-Mistakowski. And we should have known about these problems earlier on unless the department asked that the motion be drafted in order to acquire the information. I don't know. Or was this initiated by these two members? How did that happen?
No, the FLSA, the FLSA issue and with that, our effort to ensure compliance and also identify problems started prior to this motion.
I see.
It was, once, the lawsuit that has, that I referenced before, which is specifically the Kimpel lawsuit, brought FLSA issues to the forefront. However, that, we also, the CAO's office and other city departments have been working on this issue for quite some time. This is, we haven't been derelict in addressing all the issues or concerns related to our compliance with FLSA. This is something that we have, we have a very aggressive, ongoing effort. We have departments who have made this a priority. The mayor's office has told departments as part of their, the GM's performance evaluation, he will look at their compliance with these FLSA rules and regulations. So there is a very coordinated and concentrated effort on this issue.
Thank you very much. I just thought it was important to be-
Thank you very much.
...be noted, and that the information be shared as to why we are making these changes today and why they were not done early on, and-
Yes.
-you explain it.
We have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 27, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I think that-
Your button, please.
I'm sorry. Once again, we're going to need someone to come to the table and give a report on these individuals being released from prison. I think you need a more detailed report, Mr. President. Somebody going to step up to the plate? The city attorney was the one who requested to give us the information, and I think they have. Anybody from the city attorney's office willing to speak to this issue?
Mr. Holden, on your time, if you would like, we can continue this for perhaps next week, to have the city attorney here. There was a city attorney letter on the early release policy, discussions about how they had talked to the sheriff, what the sheriff had put in place in terms of a bail threshold, if the person who was incarcerated would, in setting a bail, have a higher amount than $25,000, they are not part of the early release. It's only that that's a lower amount. There are also some specific number of offenses that the sheriff excluded from any early release at all, including domestic violence, child abuse, assault on a peace officer, felony traffic offenses, et cetera. That was all contained in the city attorney's letter, and then ultimately indicating that the city of Los Angeles had no-
Right.
-no responsibility. But if you'd like further report, the city attorney, we can continue this until next week.
That'll be fine, because the sheriff, even though they're releasing these people, they didn't give the information of the specific crimes that had been committed, and they released more than 4,000 in the county area, and they couldn't tell us which ones were in the city of Los Angeles. And with repeated crimes taking place, I think it's important for us to know, at least for me and people of the city. So that's why I raised the question. Next week would be fine.
Okay. Ms. Cassidy, do you wish to be heard again?
Apparently, Mr. Holden would like the city attorney, who wrote this report, to present it. Since they're not here today, let's continue this for one week.
Okay. And Mr. Holden concurs. One week, that would be October 16th, as a new hearing date, and seeing no objection, this matter is continued. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number 28 was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
I have no further question.
Okay. I believe we're ready to proceed with the vote then on item number 28. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 37, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
Certainly, I have it under flexible work schedule, and I think that the department should come forward and tell us about this report. Things of a fiscal impact, the fact that you don't have a floor, you want to wait until this program's been implemented for one year, you can't give us specific information at this time, and like, as it relates to overtime, whether or not more overtime being requested, more time off, the hiring policy. So we don't have any specifics here. So could you tell us why not?
Well, we have actually been monitoring on a deployment period basis, and we have been getting some data. We have been looking for trends at this point. Up to this point, the trends have pretty much been as we predicted, that the overtime that we thought would go up has gone up, that that we thought would-
The overtime has done what?
The court overtime has gone up a little bit, the end of shift has gone down, that's exactly as predicted. So far, there have been no alarming trends at this point. In terms of a comprehensive analysis, it'll take several months after full implementation, but we are looking at it each deployment period to see if there are any trends that we should be concerned about, and so far, there haven't been any.
Well, you don't give us any specific numbers. You said overtime has gone up. How many hours?
I can't give you the exact number of hours, but we are monitoring it on a deployment period basis.
If you're monitoring it, you have some idea what the hours are. The report is really incomplete.
Would you like us to come back with an interim report?
Yes.
We were waiting for the full year's implementation, but if you'd like us to come back at this point in time-
At this point in time, you should have specific numbers if you're tracking it.
Then we can do that for you.
You should have specific numbers. Other than this is nothing more than boilerplate. You're identifying where you think the problems might be, or where the areas that you want to study, but you don't have any specific data suggesting you've studied those areas, that you kept a running log.
But we have worked with the department in reviewing this issue on an ongoing basis. And when this, when we were first asked to look at whether or not this program would be cost-effective, at that point, we did say we felt we would see some increased costs in court overtime, but some decreased costs, or lower costs in end-of-shift time. But what we can do is come back through, it would probably be the appropriate committee, Public Safety Committee, and report on this issue and give you an interim report, then subsequently this full council.
Yeah, wouldn't you think you might be able to do that?
Couple of weeks. We can work with the Chair of Public Safety and schedule it in a couple of weeks, and then subsequently to this council.
Good idea. Sounds good to me.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Holden, is that a motion requesting an interim report?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there any objection? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I understand that we're reviewing the issues of costs and how we implement this program, but I'm also wanting to bring up a couple of other observations that I hope can be factored in, and we talk about how we're supporting our men and women in blue. And that is, I know for a fact there are certain officers that have, that are single parents, and issues of childcare, when you're working with 12-hour schedules, are we looking at quality of life issues for our officers and how the city can support them with childcare services or childcare programs? Is that in the realm of thinking in your analysis?
We're doing nothing on that. No, we've doing nothing on that issue, sir.
Okay, is it something that is within the purview of this process?
We've been asked, at this juncture, we've been asked to look at the cost effectiveness of the compressed work schedule. If you'd like, we can expand that review to look at, as you characterize it, quality of life issues. Right now, the focus is on whether or not this program is cost-effective, and if not, what are the cost implications associated with this program?
It just seems to me, we're dealing with human beings who are parents, who have children, they're at a different work schedule now, they're doing 12-hour days, and it just seems to me we should be a little bit more, can I say this, proactive-
I understand.
-in dealing with these different parameters. And perhaps childcare is something that we want to fold into the cost issues.
Understand. For what I've been told, and we will report back on this, but what I've been told on an anecdotal basis, is that there are trade-offs. Yes, there are increased demands when a person's working that 12-hour a day, but conversely, when they're able to be off four days a week, there's an absolute benefit to the, what's been called the quality of life issues. So there are trade-offs, but-
I fully understand that. I know we have a lot of positive results from this, and I know why the officers wanted this. I want to go that extra step to see how much more we can support them by factoring these kinds of cost issues.
Understand. We'll ask those questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Mr. President and colleagues, the number of officers, the number is increasing in the LAPD?
In terms of the overall number of officers in our department, yes. We've had lower attrition than we anticipated earlier this year, and the department has been fairly successful in filling their recruit classes. Not fairly, very successful in filling their recruit classes.
With that in mind, would that have an impact on the dollars that are appropriated, the cost factors involved, if the numbers of officers are increasing?
Yes, it will. This afternoon in our, in your Budget and Finance Committee, we'll be discussing our reserve fund report, and at that time, we'll be providing information on the potential cost implications of the department's current staffing patterns.
So if we're doing an analysis on the flex schedule, when we started that, the numbers of uniformed personnel were lower than they are now. So that's going to have to be taken in consideration. If we've got more personnel, you would necessarily think, and would be a consequence, that you'd have larger expense. The other question I have, and have that formula included in there, the eight, 10, and 12, are you making a distinction between those entities on the different flex schedules? Because some are on 10, some are on 12, and I don't know if any are still on eight.
Yes, we are.
Okay. And the other question is the courts. The officers on the flex schedule will work specific days and have other days off, and I don't know if it's a cascading or a platoon or how it floats, but has there been any attempt to work with the courts to try and have the personnel go to court on their scheduled workdays versus on their days off?
I don't believe the courts have been overly cooperative. Let me clarify that. I don't believe they're willing to accommodate their schedule and the schedule, the trial schedule, to meet our needs. We've always been at the tail end of that request.
Have we attempted to try and work something out with the courts since, an officer, for example, is working on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday? He could go to court Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday versus Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and if they're sending him to court on Friday, which he's going to, whether it's on call or must appear, there's going to be an overtime cost versus if he's working or she's working, there won't be an overtime cost. On traffic citations, in my understanding, is they do send officers a couple times a month, and they load them up on those days, and they hear all the traffic cases. Have we made an attempt with the courts to try and, since a lot of these cases are dispoed, and there is no trial, to try and work with the courts to accommodate the needs of the officers as far as their time off, as well as the court schedule? If the court case is on a Tuesday versus a Thursday, save the city some money and expedite the process in the court.
Understand. In our report back, we'll address this issue.
Okay, but has there been-
For traffic is one thing.
But that was done with traffic.
Understand. But for other cases, we're at the, we basically have to comply with the schedule set by the judge, and it's done, as you know, on an individual trial or court basis.
But have we made an attempt to try and negotiate something with the presiding judge and the other judges of the court?
We'll ask the department that. Do you know if we have?
The department has, Mr. Zine, the CAO has not.
The department has?
That's my understanding.
On an individual basis, and we'll ask them-
Can we see if the CAO can do that? Since they consolidated the Superior Municipal Courts into one, we may have an opportunity to streamline that system and accommodate the needs of the court as well as the officers and save some money in the process.
We'll ask.
It won't hurt to try.
Thank you, Ms. Zine.
If it does.
Mr. Holden, do you wish to be heard again?
Yeah, I'll have that report in two weeks. Would you just attach to it the crime statistics that, you know, that's part of the report, you know? If you include that, and it's also, please put that out every month, every two weeks, just attach it, so we'll know whether crime is going up, crime is going down.
Okay.
This program may, may not be directly related to it, but it's good information.
Understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Seeing no other members wishing to be heard, I believe we have, we're ready to vote on the matter as amended with the additional report requested on an interim basis. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 64, called special for a card from the public.
Item number 64 now before us. Council calls forward Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody. I just want to speak very briefly on two items in item 64, not the whole thing, just 64F and 64I. You know, usually I talk about these little waivers of fees, and I say there that it's wrong. Well, in this case, I think it's good. It's good. This is the election 2002 gubernatorial debate, co-sponsored by the LA Times and the Tribune Broadcasting, on October 7th, 2002, waiver of fees absorbed by the city, $1,552. Well, I was mortified, nay, I was chagrined, to learn that this was the only debate, and I encourage you and the city of LA to sponsor some more debates. I think Tom Labange, remember when I ran against you, you must have had 25 debates in the 4th district? And Nate, when I ran against you for mayor in '93, you must have had 20, 25 debates. This is nonsense. However, I hope the city will waive some more fees on some more debates between now and November 5th. It does not matter if I'm a Democrat or Republican. I am chagrined and mortified that there is one debate, that Gray Davis, who has $20 million on hand, has no time to debate between now and November 5th. Thank you. And as far as 64J, which is the Wayne Gretzky Gala Dinner, which happened the other night, I'm a big fan of the Kings, and I support waiving fees, because I know Wayne Gretzky and the Kings need the money. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public comment on item 64. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 66, called special by Councilmember Holden. Item number 66, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members-
Your button, please.
I'm sorry. Contained in the motion, it suggests that there are two people opposing this entity of developing a hotel, and I'd like to know who they are and why.
Mr. Holden, yes, there were two answers to the validation claim, one from the Western Bonaventure and one from Maristar, which is Marriott.
The Bonaventure?
Yeah, that's correct.
Opposed, objected to this hotel?
They're challenging the legality of the city entering into this management contract that the council approved.
And the other one is?
It's called Maristar, it's essentially Marriott.
Is that like a hotel also?
Yeah, the Marriott Hotel downtown.
The Marriott Hotel and the Bonaventure Hotel?
Correct.
Hmm. So we need addition to council? I mean, the city attorney cannot manage this on their own right now?
The litigation of the validation action requires the specialized expertise that OREC has provided for us, both in the, in helping us with the proposals for the financial structure, and with the unique knowledge about validation actions.
This money coming from the CRA?
No, this is not a CRA project.
It's not a CRA project?
It is not.
Just, all right. It's in the CRA area, though, isn't it?
Yes.
They don't have anything to do with it at all? They never will?
At this point, they do not, and I don't know of any proposal where they would be involved. There have been discussions, obviously, since it's in a CRA project area, but they have not been involved in any of the aspects of it.
And you guys in the city attorney's office cannot manage it, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
You guys in the city attorney's office don't have the enough skills to deal with this, is that correct?
The specialized expertise is being provided by OREC. We are, and I personally have been involved in the litigation as well, from the charter standpoint, or from municipal law standpoint, but not in the financial aspects.
Now, the $175,000, that in addition to, it's already been given them, or is this-
That is correct.
This is the beginning. Well, how much have you paid us so far?
I believe it's, the billings approximately have come to about $145,000.
So it should be contained in the motion, you know, like when we have a matter on the council agenda, they say, we've spent up to $145,000, now we're going to add $175,000 more, and that should be included in the motion, don't you think so?
That's knowledge that the council is entitled to, and yes, we've been here before for that other appropriation as well, so.
I think it should have, they're going to just fine. It's in Ms. Perry's district, and it's not a CRA project. The city, the city between the city and that hotel over there, which we're trying to get, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry passes. Other members wishing to be heard, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Item 66 is approved. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Public comment period for today's regular meeting. Let me also announce, on behalf of Mr. Garcetti, some of our public comment speakers are here to make their views known on special meeting agenda item number one, but they do have to leave, so we'll hear from them at this point in time. Council calls forward Ms. Erica Zeitlin, followed by Mahmooda Akhtar, Lisa Roche, Larry Green, and Robert Aquino.
Good morning, council. My name is Erica Zeitlin. I represent No More Sweatshops, which has offices in Los Angeles, New York City, and Washington, D.C. This is a coalition that launched officially less than two weeks ago. Among our coalition partners are the United Methodist Women, Jobs for Justice, the Steel Workers Union, the United Students Against Sweatshops, the UTLA Human Rights Committee, the National Labor Committee, and many others. Our coalition is sponsoring a national tour right now of sweatshop workers from Bangladesh. Two of them will speak to you in just a moment. They work for starvation wages under the most miserable conceivable conditions for companies Disney and Walmart. The United States has a $170 billion garment industry, in which 83% is imports. Bangladesh, from where, the country from which these young women come, is the fourth-largest garment exporter to the United States. No More Sweatshops believes that the City of L.A. should be a model employer, and that tax dollars and public funds should support a responsible business climate and the public interest. At bare minimum, what that means is ensuring that tax expenditures do not subsidize the manufacturing, or contracting, or subcontracting of sweatshop conditions, labor in sweatshops. We don't want to see sweatshops overseas, we don't want to see sweatshops in Los Angeles. Unfortunately, today, Los Angeles has overtaken New York as the sweatshop capital of the country. We therefore urge the city council to do the right thing by supporting the legislation before you, which would entail a strong procurement ordinance. No More Sweatshops believes that this legislation is eminently practicable and enforceable, and we're prepared to address the specific mechanisms and ways that such an ordinance would be enforced, including through disclosure, monitoring, and stiff penalties for violations. We are prepared to address these and other matters over the next 90 days in the working group. Thank you very much. And I'd like to introduce two of our young workers from Bangladesh. We have first, Mahmooda Akhtar, she's 18 years old and comes from Bangladesh, and she works for Walmart. Apologies, she will speak through a translator, Majib Sabdeke.
My name is Mahmooda, I'm 18 years old, and I studied up to 5th grade. I took a job in garments factory when I was 13. I have been working for five years, and I work for M&amp;C for last two years, which is a contract manufacturer for Walmart. I do this job. I work from 7:30 to 11:00 P.M., and occasionally, we have to work until 3:00 A.M. In our factory, if the workers approach 30, 35 years of age, they're kicked out. In our factory, we are not paid fair wage to women, and we are abused. We are willing to work harder if necessary, but all we want, we want the job back, and we want a fair price and just rights. I close here, having said that. Thank you. My name is Lisa Rahman, I am 19 years old. I started to work since when I was 10 years old, and I could not go to school because my parents are poor. I have been working in the garments factory for last eight years, and since last three years, I have been working for Shah Magdum Factory, which is a contract manufacturer for Disney, and I have started with a salary of $1,750, which is about $30 per month, and still I am getting the same salary. I work from 8:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M., and the condition of the factory is filthy, and the bathroom is dirty, there is a tap that we use for drinking and using restroom purposes. And there are people who got sick after drinking those waters, dirty waters. We don't have any holidays and vacations. If we ask for it, we get verbal abuse. Once Charlie asked me if I know the code of conduct by the Disney, and I said, what to speak of me, even my supervisors, who are here working for last eight years, even they don't know about it. Another day, Charlie asked me, do you know what is the cost of this dress that you are making? He says, I don't know. I said, I don't know, it may be about 50, 60 taka, which is about 85 cents. Then he said, no, this is $17.99. Then I said, it's the amount that I don't even make in 15 days. I participated in producing this dress for the Disney. The US buyers, I did never think that they will care for us and think for us that they wear our dresses. We want that the Disney goes back to Bangladesh, and we get our all rights as women workers, and also we want the dignity of our work in Bangladesh.
Thank you. If I may ask you to conclude, please.
Thank you for listening to me, and for the opportunity to speak before you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our other public comment speakers are Melrose Larry Green-
Mr. President, may I just thank them for coming? I just want to, I know it's not our custom to usually respond to public comment, but I did want to thank the two women from Bangladesh for coming, and we appreciate the testimony and opening our eyes to what is happening in your country and the working conditions that are happening there. So thank you very much for coming here and being present here today. Thank you.
I too was very moved by the previous speaker's comments. My grandma and grandpa were very active in reforming the sweatshops in New York in the early part of this century, and my grandmother and grandfather helped with Samuel Gamper's organizing the unions. Boy, they're probably glad they're not alive to see me and my politics nowadays, but I did appreciate their comments. But I want to talk very, very briefly, I know you have another meeting, and this is public comment, and I want to talk about what's coming up Friday. You're going to be, I have a hearing confirming, or not confirming, hopefully confirming, Chief Bratton to be chief of the LAPD. And we all know what went on yesterday, there was a group of people, well-meaning people from the city, and of course, leave it up to the media, the LA Times and the Daily News, to present half of what happened yesterday in today's paper. I wasn't mentioned, the fact that I'm a big supporter of Chief Bratton and what he represents, that wasn't in the paper. And I want to just briefly, briefly talk about what it said in the LA Times on Sunday, this is a quote, talking about the police commission. "After the park controversy settled down, the commission settled in and conducted a professional search for a new chief. This in itself was a departure from the previous election process under Chief Parks." One of the problems, this according to Joe Dominic, the author of Protect and to Serve the LAPD Century of the War and the City of Dreams, from the LA Times on Sunday. "The problems facing the city are departmental reform, flagging officer morale, and mounting attrition, and a federal consent decree hanging over the LAPD's head." Now, it says it right there. I've read today's Daily News, this is not a slam dunk, that Bratton will be confirmed, and I want to make just a few comments to councilpeople Reyes, Galanter, Perry, Holden, Garcetti, and Pacheco. When you talk to Mr. Bratton on Friday, don't hold back. I want you to ask him the most pointed questions you can, from the very part of your gut, from the visceral gut, representing all these people here yesterday that had reservations. I know the others I didn't mention, I think will vote for confirmation, but I'm talking about those other seven or eight who may be on the fence. Ask him any questions you have, and take those people's comments yesterday, and ask him, how's he going to stand up for the Latino communities in this city? Ask him who's he going to appoint to his chief staff, and you'll be happy. But give him the right time of day, give him a break. The fact the guy might have been looking for a house before he was nominated is ridiculous. If I was in the final three, you darn well bet your bottom dollar I'd be looking for a house.
If I can ask you to wrap it up, please?
I'm going to wrap it up.
Additional speakers.
Saying I'm wrapping it up, and I won't even waste my time talking about the governor. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Aquino, followed by Morris Kite.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, council members. I'm joined here today by President of EAA, Steve Hutchinson, and two of our governors, Steve Rosenberg and Indra Resum. On Wednesday last week, our Board of Governors voted unanimously to take a position opposing secession of the Valley in Hollywood, and in fact, we've already implemented a campaign or expending resources to go ahead and implement our campaign to do so. In doing this, our governors had to balance the specific needs of EAA members against the more general needs of this city, which includes EAA members, about 9,700 of them, and they came to the conclusion rightfully, I believe, that it was time for us to do whatever we could do in this battle. I would like to remind this council that it was EAA that expended resources in lobbying the State Lands Commission, and in fact, it was a letter that I wrote to the State Lands Commission with help from these gentlemen, that was quoted three times in their decision to award the port of L.A. to Los Angeles, which was very fundamental in making sure that the harbor attempt did not come to fruition. We're going to expend those same type of efforts in this campaign, and we just wanted to make sure that this council understood where EAA stood on this issue as of this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Norris Kite.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Morris Kite. I've lived in Los Angeles for 47 years, appeared before the council many times, and enjoyed it. I come here today to thank Tom Labange and Gil, Mr. Garcetti, Eric Garcetti, for your good offices. You have taken the leadership of opposing the destruction of Los Angeles. I really thank you for that. You opened an office in Hollywood to particularly talk about the peculiarity of the Hollywood campaign. When you had an opening, I couldn't attend, I was booked somewhere, but I'm here now. Really, you were doing what you took an oath to do, to protect the citizens of the 4th and 13th District, and for that matter, the city of Los Angeles. I have observed the Hollywood campaign, and I can't possibly describe the- I have observed the Hollywood campaign, and I can't possibly describe the horror that it represents. It's ill-thought-out, it's selfish, it's totally partisan, and it's anti-participation. The Hollywood that the campaign is talking about is on the north by the Bowl and the Ford Theater, on the west by La Brea, on the south by Santa Monica Boulevard, on the west by Galler. And yet Hollywood, the map that they show contains Olympus, Mount Olympus. I visit Mount Olympus a lot, and the neighbors there are perfectly content. The city services are just excellent. The parts of Hancock Park are included. Hancock Park is not angry with Los Angeles, they're happy. Worse still, the map that they show has East Hollywood and Echo Park as part of the concern. The people in East Hollywood and Echo Park couldn't care less about the role of downtown Hollywood. They're fighting for survival, jobs, housing, so on. One of their mailers, they say that a goal of the new city of West Hollywood would be to reorganize the school system. How dare they, how dare they politicize such a delicate matter as the school system? The school system has terrible problems. For one thing, most of the students are, are from third world countries. And they're needing new schools, and they need parent participation, and they don't have enough of it. But to make it a political issue is just tasteless, just simply horrible. The Hollywood sign, one of their ads shows the Hollywood sign and proudly says that it would be in the new city of West Hollywood. How dare they, how dare they use the one other symbol of Los Angeles that's universally known, this tower and the Hollywood sign? Wherever you go in the world, those who this and that sign are recognized. It's somewhat like the Champs-Elysees, Eiffel Tower, the Great Wall of China, the pyramids in Egypt. It's just a recognizable symbol. And to have them claim credit for the geography of it, it was just a real estate promotion accident, but it wound up an inexpensive symbol. The campaign has not really been a campaign, it's been a promotion, it's been an aggrandizement. And I really think that each of you should take a role in opposing it.
If I may ask you to conclude, please.
I hope that Mrs. Perry and Mr. Ridley Thomas and, and Mr. Holden, say to the residents of your district, this is not in your class interest. This is to get, escape from tax responsibility. And it will not make life for you better, it will make life for you worse.
Thank you very much.
I presume there are some anti-government people in those neighborhoods who might be voting against the government.
Sir, may I ask you to conclude, please?
As for the, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Vidia, and Mr. Pacheco, it's not in the class interest of your neighbors.
We thank you very much. You've had plenty of time. I'm going to ask you to conclude now.
As for the Valley Council members, they have an uncommonly heavy responsibility.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment.
It's not, not being well served.
For today's meeting. Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk.
I just wanted to thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk for this meeting.
Okay, before, without anybody going, members, let me remind you that we do have one item on a special meeting agenda that was posted for twelve noon today. So, I can ask for your patience for about five minutes, so we can formally take that matter up and act upon special meeting agenda item number one. In the meantime, Madam Clerk, is there any other housekeeping?
No, Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Members, are there any announcements today? Any announcements today? Okay, then let's take a quick five-minute recess, and we'll be back here at noon to take up our final matter of business. Now, in session, we have a one-item agenda. We do have additional speakers on this item. Council calls forward Judge Ralph Fertig on special meeting agenda item number one. Anat Tamir and Adalila Zalada, please come forward.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this afternoon. My name is Anat Tamir, and I'm here representing Progressive Jewish Alliance. PJA is a nonprofit social justice organization. We deal with a number of social justice issues, among them economic justice. And so naturally, garment industry sweatshops are an issue of serious concern to us, especially as our own downtown is littered with them. I'm here to encourage you to adopt this most critical motion to create a mechanism by which the issue of sweatshops and the procurement policies of the city of Los Angeles will be dealt with. Sweatshops are a human-made problem, and they can therefore be fixed by humans. And so this is where you come in as our government. I encourage you to use your power to improve the lives of so many here in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. It's been years since I've been before you. I have many friends here, and I'm happy to be back among you. I'm Ralph Fertig. I'm from the 5th District, Vice President and founder of the current chapter of Americans for Democratic Action, Southern California chapter. And I'm very happy to be speaking in behalf of our thousands of members. We have them in every district, every one of the 15. And we thank and applaud Councilman Eric Garcetti for introducing this motion. And we're really grateful that the council is considering and recognizing the importance of adopting an anti-sweatshop procurement policy for the city of Los Angeles. To put it plainly, tax dollars should not be spent on the procurement of uniforms for manufacturers that pay poverty wages or engage in unsafe and discriminatory job practices. Mr. Garcetti's motion merely integrates the expenditures that you, as the council, will authorize with your already expressed fine policies on human rights and family values. It is the first step towards ensuring that the millions of dollars the city spends each year on uniforms will be directed toward apparel manufacturers that engage in responsible business practices. It will therefore provide responsible contractors with a competitive edge over those that exploit and abuse their workers. Since most city employees buy their uniforms directly from specialty retailers, a city inventory of apparel should not be difficult to compile, since those retailers can assist in providing the city with copies of their own computerized inventories. Americans for Democratic Action urges and encourages the council to adopt this motion. It's important that tax dollars be used to enhance the economic and social well-being of the employees that make our city uniforms and not to fund sweatshops that would exploit them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Adalila Zalada. I am an attorney doing human rights and environmental work, and also a coordinator for the Southern California Fair Trade Network. This is part of a broader campaign, the Citizens Trade Campaign, which is working on trade issues, particularly this past year against Fast Track. It's made up of groups like Public Citizen, the AFL-CIO, Friends of the Earth, the National Family Farm Coalition, et cetera. We appreciate Councilman Garcetti's efforts on this very important ordinance. We have been doing a lot of work to reverse the trend of destructive free-market policies that encourage corporations to do what they want, where they want, and how they want. This has encouraged a race to the bottom in terms of labor standards, human rights, and environmental standards. Workers are competing against each other to attract foreign investment, and those who lose are ordinary people, particularly women, for the sake of profit. The garment industry has been no exception. Particularly women who are the largest participants in this area are suffering around the world from a lack of adequate health and safety standards, from adequate wages. Their rights to organize, to unionize, are being repressed. And California, which, if California were its own country, I believe it would represent about the fifth-largest economy in the world, you have a chance, as part of this great economy, to send a message to the international community that we will not tolerate this kind of race to the bottom. We need international standards, and this is the first step towards creating them. In this age of corporate scandals, due to a lack of regulations, these are exactly the kind of ordinances that can reverse that kind of trend. Local governments can and must play a role on this very important matter by supporting this legitimate and necessary legislation. New York City has already passed a very similar ordinance, and Los Angeles needs to follow that lead. I thus urge you to vote in favor of this ordinance so that you can say that you put people before profits.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We heard the testimony before us just now. We also heard in public comment in our previous engendized meeting about some of the conditions for workers around the world. And we know that it is something that has relevance both across the oceans and right in our backyard as well. When we look at the conditions of workers that are in the garment industry, and we, as one of the largest employers in Los Angeles and in the region certainly, have a responsibility to live up to the same thresholds that we ask of those that do business with the city. That's why we have a worker retention ordinance. That's why we have equal benefits ordinance. That's why we have the living wage here. And for all of us, when we think about it, sometimes we hear something moving, like an 18-year-old, 79-pound Bangladeshi woman telling us how horrible the work conditions are where she works manufacturing clothes that each one of us wear. And we think to ourselves, that's sad. Maybe I can do something in Bangladesh. But what role do we, as a body, have here in Los Angeles? Why should the Los Angeles City Council address this? But colleagues, I know that you agree with me that we do have a role. We have a moral responsibility, and we can take action to set the standard, to make sure that we have those same moral precepts that we push in our legislation in the same way that we act as an employer and as a purchaser. So this motion does two things. First, it looks at making an inventory of all the clothes that we procure in this city so that we can have an idea of all the different departments, what clothes that we actually buy. And then, second, to set up a mechanism for sweat-free apparel here. After Kathy Lee Gifford and a lot of the attention that was made a couple of years ago of conditions in sweatshops happen, a lot of companies did sign on codes of ethical standards. And yet, as we hear today, and we heard in the EDE Committee the other day, on Monday, many times, there are two different systems, one for the monitors and one which is the reality on the ground. So that when they know the monitors are coming, all the 12- and 13- and 14-year-old girls get locked up for that day, and it seems like everybody's of the right age. There's two worker cards, one of them which actually says total to normal working hours, and then there's the real worker card, which shows actually the slave conditions that the workers are in. Locally, we know this has also been an issue here, whether it was Almonte or probably right here in the backyard in Los Angeles. And we have to make sure, we have to ensure that we not only just sign a code of ethical conduct, but we ask those that are selling us goods, whether they come from overseas or here, that they can confirm that there are fair working conditions for those garment workers. This does that. New York has not been able to do that. I know that we can. I want to thank from my staff, we had a Coro intern, Jordan Henry, who's out there in the audience, for his great work with us. It's been wonderful to have you, and thank you for your leadership on that. I want to thank the PJA. I want to thank ADA. I want to thank all the groups, castes, that have been a big part of putting this together. And we're looking forward to convening this working group. Today, this is not the ordinance. It convenes a working group for 90 days to come back to us with an ordinance that will set the standard and that will make all of the working men and women of this city proud to wear the uniforms that they do each and every day. Thank you.
Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Anybody who wears these expensive tennis shoes that we see sold and advertise, sweatshops. I won't name the country, but I had the occasion to visit this country, a particular country, and it fumes, the odor. The ventilation system shut down. And they were just, they had a hospital right there on site. The beautiful young ladies would come, they worked there for a few years, and after that, they end up in the hospital with lung problem, lung disease. I spoke to management and to the government officials about that. And so these kinds of problems are kind of permeate the entire Southeast Asia area and other countries as well. I'm glad to come out and oppose it. The other thing is that we buy these things. Not just some of our big chain stores are buying them, but they're being sold all throughout the United States of America because we don't produce those things here. We import. We don't design, develop, or build almost anything, televisions, microwaves, tennis shoes, suits, clothes. And you buy them at an affordable price. And you like to go into the store and buy like that. But if you're going to set a standard for the world, I'm going to vote for this. But we had problems over there once before, and we imposed the same kind of restrictions and limitations as we did in South Africa. But apartheid, when one of the oil companies went to extract oil from one of those countries over there, and that was the big discussion in the city council. And we addressed that issue then, as we will this one today. It's a very sad situation. Those people's life expectancy don't even come close to being what I was there. Even their own country, as compared to someone who's going to gain employment in other areas. But what I've seen is enough to want to make you sick for life. And if this will go some way in helping make correcting the problem, then I'm very glad to support the motion.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Councilman Garcetti for his leadership bringing this forward, and Councilman Holden for his observations, and those of you from Coro for bringing this forward and bringing this kind of highlight to this issue. But I wanted to magnify a little bit about the comment about this being in our own backyard. And quite frankly, council members, those of you who are still in the hall or in the horseshoe who are listening, we have the ability to look at our own industrial zones. If you look at the different cases that come before your desk, when you're looking at any kinds of improvements or additional rights you give manufacturing centers for building out their facilities, you are in a position to make sure that the conditions in our own backyard are improved. And we have the ability, if we were to take it to that level, to put together a task force to look at which buildings are right now operating under hazardous conditions because they've packed in sewing machines on that second floor, a dimly lit office building, or what might be viewed as an apartment above that commercial area on your main corridors. Those are sweatshops. So I know in the past, we've been active in making sure that building and safety codes are being implemented. So should you come across cases in which these kinds of proposed projects are being put forth in your district, we have the ability to change the conditions that are now in the city of L.A. I know I've been able to engage a few of those, and we put conditions that monitor. We actually go back and visit to make sure that they are allowing for eating facilities, decent bathrooms, and sewing machines to be spread out so many feet to allow for fire hazard conditions, to eliminate those fire hazard conditions. So I'm just sharing this with these thoughts with you. We need to look at our backyard, but it is an international issue. It's a basic issue, supply and demand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. I believe that concludes the special meeting agenda. Let us adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting agenda. We have concluded this agenda as well. Seeing no announcements. Are there any adjourning motions today? Please stand for adjourning motions. Ms. Kroll.
Yes, I am on behalf of Councilmember Burnson. Have two adjourning motions. The first one is Joanne Lombardi. She passed away at the age of 72 years old. She's been, she was married for 52 years. She's survived by her husband Charles, six children, 13 grandchildren, and one great-grandson. And this is an individual who lived next door to Councilmember Burnson for 26 years in Granada Hills. So he wanted to make sure that we adjourned in her memory today. Also, on behalf of Mr. Burnson, is Rose Marie Mimi Couch. She was editor of the West Valley Community Newspaper, American Eagle News, and she died Friday, October 4th, following a brief illness. She was a Chatsworth resident for more than 40 years, and her, Mimi and her publisher friend, Jean Forsyte, founded the American Eagle News in Northridge. The publication specializes in legal advertising. Previously, Ms. Couch and Ms. Forsyte published the Northridger. She's survived by her sister Rita and brother Ray, and funeral services will be held this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. at the Oakwood Memorial Park in Chatsworth. And I'd like to also have us adjourn in her memory, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kroll. Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.